Regular meeting to order. For all those that can, please stand to cite the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have um one regular member that is not here, so Marcus, we will see you as a regular member tonight.
Alright.
Alright.
Just need a pen.
Okay, so minutes, Bill, you wanna?
Yep. Okay, referring to the minutes of our November fourteenth twenty twenty three meeting, which was a regular meeting. Does anyone have any comments to page one, which uh more or less lines one through forty five?
No. Whoops.
Page two, lines forty six through ninety?
Yeah, fifty three.
Yep.
Um, I think it's supposed to be compromises. Not, um, I think it says agreed that this comprises existing restaurant, but I think this compromises.
Compromises. Yeah.
It was supposed to be.
That's probably right.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
No, no problem. Yeah.
Okay, so line fifty three, change the word comprises to compromises. Anything else, commissioners?
I didn't see anything. No, go ahead.
Page three, lines ninety one through one twenty. Alright, hearing all their comments, I make a motion to accept the minutes from the November fourteenth twenty twenty three Simsbury Planning Commission regularly scheduled meeting as amended.
I'll give a second.
All those in favor of the minutes as amended, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I am.
Okay.
I wasn't here.
So it passes five zero with one abstention. Alright, so no new business, we'll go right into the P O C D.
Okay, so you um Gl- Glenn prepared based upon your comments of eleven fourteen and direction and prepared a a red line full uh uh red line version of the changes that you directed. Put that in your Dropbox, I've got it on the um on the screen as well. So um I would just, I would ask Glenn to come join me at the table and I don't know if we need to take you through it, I I I mean, I think, I'm not, I'm not sure we need to do that, um.
No, I think uh as long as the comments that were made in the last meeting were adhered to. I took, I took a quick look and
Yeah, that's fine.
It looks fine.
I did provide Glenn today with um eight items that were all um e- editorial in nature. Comma here, that kind of.
I just, I just have one thing on page twelve.
You had the three hundred.
Yes.
There's a formatting issue.
Place, place twelve has been identified.
Oh, yeah, I saw that, yeah. I did have.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, yeah, I don't understand what happened there, what and why.
I had sent that in to her too, I know.
It's like a footnote, it's like I I I, you know, an an end note.
Yeah.
I I emailed George.
Yeah.
There's also another place where, you know, what the word was, but it dropped a T and put in a dash.
Yeah.
And I was like, wait a second, what's going on?
I didn't know whether that was, that might have been a function of the strike through version.
So that's on page twelve?
Yeah.
Yeah, the three fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Three fifty.
I thought it was like a little um variable, so that anytime we issued a medallion with a fifty in it, it would.
Yeah.
Three fifty.
I thought that, I
It would do that.
Do that.
So you know what, it might be, just for for full disclosure, um, let's just, just show you what I, what I sent him, just so you're, you were aware of what I sent.
Yep.
That was this morning, I think. I don't even know when it was.
Yep.
So there you go, uh, one through seven. Uh, the only, so the, the only, uh, the only piece of substance here is, is item um, is item number seven on page one oh six. So I, I just, I, my comment to Glenn was that
I know, it's like
I know, it's like This takes forever.
I, it'll take a while for you to get there, but I, I didn't recall the, the planning commission directing the action item of requesting a new position for sustainability manager. So I just raised that with Glenn, I just don't know if you had remembered doing that, um, but I didn't remember that.
No, I think it came up in the public hearing that somebody suggested and asked for that, but I don't think.
It did.
Somebody asked for it.
That daddy, yeah. The chairman of the sustainability committee, um, Mark, has been asking.
Well, no, but it was a some, a little
It was one of the limit, yeah.
Oh, uh, there's several members, okay, there were several members.
Yeah, remember, yeah.
And they had a discussion on, on the eleventh here about, cause there were, there were essentially two requests for two different positions.
It's Susan.
One was a sustainability manager and the other was a
Yeah.
Energy conservator.
Energy conservation.
Yes.
Consultant or something, correct.
Um, and so my, my point to the least is I don't, I don't recall.
Two more pages.
I don't recall that we
Thank you guys saying that, but we're happy to keep it in, if that's your desire, if not, we would, I would recommend taking it, yeah, so it's H there in the middle of the page.
We, we, we can.
Seek funding for town sustainability coordinator in future budgets. Just, it's up to you guys.
I don't think we ever concluded that we should do that.
No, I don't. I don't remember that either.
Yeah.
It was definitely discussed, but I, I, I don't think we
It, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think so neither.
No.
So I, I'd like to have it struck.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
I would agree.
I, as liaison to the sustainability committee, I do know that that is something they desire, but they have made that clear obviously.
Yes, they have, yeah.
And they can pursue it, we're not saying not to, but I think to make it part of the, yeah.
They can, they can, they can pursue it outside of this venue.
Outside of the, right, right. Okay. So that was one of your?
Yeah, that was, um, I'll just show you the rest of it. Um, so in number one, there was a, there was a, I, I found a T was missing, there was a comma that was um was necessary next to equity, um, we all identified three hundred and fifty as being some sort of formatting issue. There was a backwards parentheses on page forty six, on page seventy two, I, I think the language said such as, it's such as completing the performing arts center. My recollection was that the language in my notes said completing the performing arts center master plan is what I, is what I recall of their, their, their chairperson saying in front of you. So I suggested adding that.
Okay.
Um, I suggested Glenn use the word effectively, we, this is the discussion on page ninety seven, we're talking about um our affordability percentage. And that with the
Yeah.
when we add, when, when the housing use, next year uses the twenty twenty data, our number that's five point one today is going to drop back down to four point eight. We, we know that, cause we're not gonna add anything in the next year. So I just suggest to use the word effectively, because again, that that calculation isn't formalized yet.
Okay.
It's not an official number.
So that was on page ninety seven?
Page ninety seven.
Okay, so I have a comment as well on ninety seven.
That's what I'm trying to
The box at the bottom. You can scroll there pretty quickly, George.
My numbers are two pages short here.
Okay.
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 It's really hard to
Okay, so it says, this P O C D chapter is designed as the twenty twenty four affordable housing plan for Simsbury as provided in C G S section eight dash thirty J. I mean, it supersedes the currently published affordable housing plan?
Uh, it incorporates that plan into this and gets us another five years from today for the affordable housing.
Is it incorporated verbatim?
Uh. Referenced.
Right, cause there's a lot in it.
We didn't change anything in it.
I think we, we certainly will, I forget what we say.
On ninety seven, thank you.
But we should certainly reference it by
Yeah, I know, it's
Yeah, it's referenced, there's a synopsis or an excerpt on page ninety six, but I, I did not think that we were trying to update the affordable housing plan as part of the P O C D update.
Yeah, I can't put my finger on where it's, there is a synopsis, you're right, Bill.
Yeah, it's on page ninety six.
Right.
Yeah, I went backwards a little bit.
So it's ninety six.
It's a one page.
So let me see, we just start.
It's a good synopsis, but it doesn't have the entire plan.
So, I might just go one more here. Yeah, so this
Okay, screw it.
That's
I mean, there's a lot of the same elements, for sure. I mean, I can go get it and just make, see if it's, I mean, I, I don't remember whether we just took it off. Or whether we just said this is kinda it.
I'm not, this is not working.
Well, I think it's up to the commission here, I think, uh
Cause it's
I'm, I'm gonna grab it, it's like, I've got it in my hand.
Did you see the overshoot in?
Well, I did, and it got me out of this, and now it's, it's
Yeah, now you're stuck.
And I am stuck.
I just, I just got it.
Oh, did it? Oh, my god, it's not, okay, oh, see, I get impatient. Okay, here we go. Trying to get to page ninety. Is there a way to like?
Well, I put it sideways to start with.
Oops, no.
Four drawers.
Yeah, that might be a better way to do it, though. Well, maybe not. Down. Oh, there you go.
We're stable.
Yep, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, it's not identical. I mean, it's, we, we didn't do it verbatim, cause there's a, you know, a host of uh, you know, data tables and
Yeah, yeah.
and those different kinds of things there.
It's the commission.
I, I applaud your willingness to save us effort.
Well, the next one's due in two years, so.
Yeah.
And we've done
I think that the incorporation
Yeah, that's it, we really have to get off.
That's not gonna change, like, we gave it to B L S.
Well, I think they have other priorities.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a lot more noise about it this time.
Right.
Your biggest challenge for Simsbury is that
It's
they added quite a number of housing units in the last ten years.
Yep.
The affordable housing percentage, had the zoning commission established a inclusionary set aside of ten percent of all new developments, we would, we'd be rocking it in a lot of different ways, but as George indicated, percentage is probably gonna go down by
Mm-hmm.
Several tenths, yeah. So I think
I, I would, I would say this, I don't, I, I mean, I, I mean, at, at the, because this was kinda called a twenty twenty one through twenty twenty six plan, but I would suggest maybe just changing that box to say that um the affordable housing plan is incorporated by reference. Which we do, we do, we did it to the bike and ped plan, we did it, so I, I don't think this get, I think we have to, we'll have to address it in twenty twenty six. Yeah. I don't think
And we should, because we really need to, to, to kick this into higher gear.
I, I, I would You understand what I'm guessing?
I mean, we did all this work and nothing's happened, and it's got
I don't like it, I don't give a
Yeah, or ra- or just a regular text, that you don't even need to be a blue box.
Well, I think there will be the advisory committee.
And then a link, a link to the affordable housing.
Well, it's, can't happen.
Are we doing a hyperlink?
I think we're part of
We're trying to, the, the, the issue sometimes is the, whether the uh web address is gonna stay stable.
So we're gonna work on the, I think we're gonna work on the hyperlink post publication. I, I'll work with the I T department to
Okay.
Okay.
make that PDF alive, doc.
Then maybe, maybe, maybe the reference can be written such that it refers the reader to the uh, the, the planning commission's webpage. Because all our, all our, you know, subdivision regulations
It, it can be found on
Right, can be found, yeah.
I like that.
And then, and you know, at the time when the hyperlink strained out, can insert.
Yep.
Okay, so, um
So are you suggesting this to come out?
Nope, no, no, just, just the box, just the box.
Oh, okay.
No, no, that's a nice summary, just that, wait.
You know, it's, that's not inconsistent with the
Which box?
So he suggests, so he
This box, right, we run the next bit.
So we would strike this box here, that
Oh, the ninety seven, yeah, gotcha.
The bottom box, it says P O G chapter is designated as the plan.
Yeah.
And replace it with inline text that says the twenty twenty one to twenty six affordable housing plan is hereby incorporated.
Uh-oh, no, I'm not.
Aaron, is page ninety nine in there, but it's ninety seven in the book.
Yeah, thank you, Marcus, I did, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep, ninety nine.
Okay.
Ninety nine to the, to the PDF to the hard numbers, sorry.
So that's gonna, we're gonna do that.
If you use your phone, it's probably gonna be easier.
You know what, it would be faster.
Okay, so then, um
Yeah.
Well, it works.
On page one thirty two. Is that one thirty two, George?
Yes.
Okay, something that says since the affor- okay, that last paragraph in the blue box, since the affordable housing plan is required has been integrated into this P O C D. So
Yep.
that, that needs to be, we're gonna
I have to change, I have to change that too.
Good catch.
Yep.
Very good catch.
Those are my only two comments, and I, I read o- I read it over very carefully.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was obvious, yeah.
No, I thought it was great, I, I saw the three fifty thing, but
There's a big change there.
Sorry to language.
Yeah, so just take out the bottom of that box.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, the, the ten.
Maybe just delete that, just paragraph.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I would do, yep, just take out that paragraph.
Yeah. Yeah, there's something I don't, I, just um for my education, one of the maps, and it was the one with the uh um
Maps at the end or in the, in the earlier?
Uh, it, it had the um biodiversity
Natural resources, so it's up at uh
Fifty.
No, thirty, thirty thirty seven, thirty nine in the PDF.
Oh, it's a great map. This is a calm, it's a great map then.
Okay, so the legend calls out watercourses, wetlands, natural diversity database areas, FEMA hundred year floods and FEMA five hundred year floods. I didn't know what the, the brown color was.
Oh, steep slopes.
It's cash, well, that's a pretty cool
Okay, so that needs to be added, that was, I didn't know if that was, you know, a leftover from something.
Yeah.
Good catch.
I'm sorry, uh, are you on page thirty seven?
Thirty seven, I think.
I'm awful at this.
I know. I'm at like ninety.
Yeah, we're missing this deep slope in, uh, reference in the legend.
Oh, yeah, wow, Bill, that is a good catch.
Yeah.
We'll all, we'll all be able to make that change if we have money left in the budget to get the map guys to reopen that. Kinda kidding, but not totally.
I didn't expect that to be a change, sorry, George, I, 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 I just wanted to be educated.
It needs, how it uh slipped by this many times, it's crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But now that's kinda cool to know.
Yes. So when you're out hiking, you know nowhere not to go.
So it's this one, right? Well, I've actually done quite a bit of these hikes, but I didn't know there were so many more of those steep areas. Yeah.
Simsbury Land Trust likes to go verticals.
I know.
Oh, okay.
God bless him.
I had a question about the prioritization, and it's in here, correct, and are we going to do it, or?
Yeah.
I mean
Yes.
Okay.
The what?
Priorit-
There you
Prioritization, I think, okay.
We, we did have that discussion.
Right.
Um, and just a- as a reminder, Glenn and I had talked offline as well, and we, we thought that the best approach, because of the changeover, the election changeover, the, the brand new board of selectmen, significant changeovers on other boards and commissions, that it made better sense to wait and do the prioritization process with the, the new constitutional boards.
Okay.
So that will likely be a, a staff effort with a little bit of help of Glenn, but
Okay.
At that point, he's kinda given us the suitcase to take it, so.
That was my next question, okay. Okay.
So there's a paragraph on page one thirty, one thirty two in the PDF, um, that summarizes what George just said.
That's what I'm trying, now I gotta go then.
Oh, yeah, now I gotta go.
And you
Yes, there you go.
Oh, thank you.
Give you Oh, preview, and you can scroll the first.
Oh, where do you see that?
Okay.
Where, where's that?
One thirty, I think he said one, what was it, one thirty seven?
One thirty, yeah.
Oh, no, I would, we're, we're the preview, so he could scroll through so fast.
One thirty in the document, one thirty two.
Two, um, yeah. Now, it's, does that involve any of the commissioners going to other commissions, or is it something that they do, like, how, how are you envisioning that?
So what, what has happened in the past with this type of thing is that there is a communication to these other boards that are involved in land use type issues um, that it's important to sort of prioritize. We can't do all policies, we can't do all action steps, but if we were to sort of tackle them from highest priority down, which ones would, would that be? So, uh, George and I were talking about different ways that we've done this in the past, the way I found to be sort of the most successful is once the group is identified, um, they receive paper copies with colored dots. Tried to do this online, but the problem is everybody just keeps giving one priorities and they, they're not really discerning between the real priorities. So when you have colored dots and only a certain number of them, then you have to, you have to make some hard choices. So it's been pretty effective that one.
Yeah, I would, I would anticipate doing it live, I mean, as opposed to mail, you can see, you have, just have a little exercise at each of these boards and commissions that we identify. We know who they're gonna be, and just kinda at a meeting, be on the agenda, and I'm gonna, we'll hand out the matrix, you know, the matrix only of, of the action items, and then walk them through that process.
Okay.
I think that's the best way to do it.
Uh, it's funny, some of them have come back, so generally what I've done is provided anonymity to people in the past.
Yeah.
I've, I've sort of kept it out of and said, look, you, to you, I send it to you, you send it back to me. I do the policies first and then the action steps, so they couldn't mix the dots from one exercise to the other. Um, and people, you know, they've, they've done it in pencil, and then they've gone back and erased it and all of the other stuff to kind of figure out what they wanna do.
Isn't the anonymous way you think works better, and it's open to do that, you're doing that too.
I, I think for, for some people, that, you know, they, they, yeah, again, I just, I don't know if it makes a difference to people or not, but it's, it was just meant to be
Sure.
a way for people to share their priorities without it becoming sort of public information. So that, that's what I provided in that scenario, um.
So how would you, may, may, maybe for, for, for the commission's benefit, how would you, how, how do you, how, how do you see the plan implementation committee coming about?
That was my next question.
And does this, does this commission make a recommendation to the board of selectmen on, on, on one, that we should do it, and two, what its makeup might be? How do you, or do, or?
Every town's done this a little bit differently, I don't know that you need to
That's why I asked.
Board of Selectmen involved.
Well, I had the same question, George, that's
I don't think you need to get the board of selectmen involved.
Yeah.
But the P O C D is a document of planning commission, the planning implementation committee is a team building exercise that can start here. And the issue is, uh, we would like to give this plan legs, um, and so we welcome involvement from the committees and commissions that are affiliated with this. And we're gonna get together and talk, it's not a huge commitment. I had one town that, that tried to meet monthly on plan implementation, it doesn't work, cause the, a board meets once a month, and so it can't possibly have completed what you wanted them to do in, in a month, so two to four times a year is about what can happen, and set the priorities and focus in on zoning. Do you think it's possible that you could initiate and adopt a regulation change to do this? And the answer could be, yeah, we can, we can do that in six months, and boom, you're off and running. So just to create progress in incremental steps along the way, without, you know, sort of
Yeah.
wa- waiting, et cetera, so it's both art and science in terms of implementation, but I think if we think about it as sort of management, team building um, and focusing efforts, um, I think some towns have really done very effective jobs on this over the years at times. The, the people involved are critical to, you know, bring other people along with them and talk through ideas, et cetera.
Do you envision people from, is, cause that's so the way, I guess the way I was envisioned is, is people from this board, from zoning, from the land use boards, right? So it's representatives that get together two to four times a year, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So we would have to reach out to other boards today, okay, who, you know?
Yeah, so I can go back and, and projects that I've worked on in the past, I can share all this information with George. I think most other boards or commissions, if they receive a letter from the planning commission that says, listen, you know, in the first couple of months of twenty twenty four, we are looking to establish a plan implementation committee. We think a representative from your board, commission, agency, um, would help us uh figure out ways to prioritize and implement the I, I think people on the boards would sort of start to trip over themselves about who wants to volunteer to be on the board. So I think, you know, some curating of membership isn't necessarily a bad idea, you can reach out to individuals or reach out to boards, but I think you'll get strong interest at the beginning, and then cultivating that interest and keeping it moving is the next big step, because if people wanna sign on, but then they're not gonna sort of contribute, it's, you have to get to the next step.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that the balance of the, of the, that committee would be those organizations that have been identified in your implementation matrix as the leaders or, you know, primary project leaders for the action items.
Yeah.
Right, people have things
I mean, that's
Yeah.
that's, that's what they would be.
But don't, uh, group dynamics are important in terms of the number of people on the board.
And you're
Yes, of course.
If, if you have a seventeen member group, because that's the number, it's, it's gonna struggle
Yep.
just because of group dynamics. On the other hand, if, if there's like five people telling everybody else what to do, that, that's, so it's
Yeah.
finding that sweet spot, it's every town's ability.
So we're just gonna have to spend more time on, on talking, thinking about that.
Okay.
So I, I've had the opportunity to work with a number of municipalities over the years, and I did a survey some years ago, and they said, when you look back now on a plan, and those plans now could be ten, twenty, or, or older than that, what was the most effective thing in terms of plan implementation? People said it was the plan implementation committees. The real value in a plan comes in the first three years. You're not making progress in the first three years, you're not gonna suddenly wake up in year four or five, it's, it's sort of, it's got a half-life, right? It's radioactive in a sense, and so the question is, if you can create that momentum going in the first year or two, you know, and people see the value of the plan and the results and things starting, then, then momentum will continue to go. But that, that becomes sort of the challenge in most scenarios.
You know, that, that makes a lot of sense, because, you know, so many of the other uh committees and towns and boards were instrumental in providing input into the plan, so they're waiting to see, hey, are we gonna do something on their suggestions?
Right.
And now we can turn it around and say, okay, here's our chance.
And I think the selectman, even the board of finance, if the board of finance says, listen, you know, we may be able in this next budget to be able to free up X dollars for, you know, the key project recommendation in the P O C D, or, or could, could the board of finance find a way to key up something here? And the issue is, yeah, we think, we understand the effort that went into this, the community involvement, everything else, and we think that we could start the ball rolling this way, boom, right? Cause now people start to see the dollars and effort go into these things, and again, the plan gets more impetus, if you will, in terms of making positive things happen. So therein lies the challenge in this effort, it's it's involving other people and getting them to do things, I mean, for, the zoning commission, the zoning commission never changes a regulation, there's many strategies in the plan, they're just, they're not gonna go anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the other hand, incrementally, you could start to make small changes, I think that can be very
Should the uh planning implementation committee, or rather, the planning committee itself already kind of prioritize what we'd like to see happen first? So that we have a, uh, you know, we speak with univocality when we uh reach out to the other groups?
No, I mean, I, 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 I think the first, the first part is, is that prioritization process.
True, yeah.
We're, we're, we will let those groups help, uh, help you
Yeah, that's what I meant, that's, that's what I was afraid to, yeah.
i- identify the prioritization.
So I mean, that's something we're gonna be doing ourselves.
That the implementation group would, would start with, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, well
That we would do, but then the implementation committee would use that as a, as a roadmap.
There's two ways There's two ways that, that this could unfold, one of which is that the implementation committee gets established, they involve their boards and entities, et cetera,
Mm-hmm.
in the priorities and then come back. Um, the other way would be to do the, the commission, which prepared and adopted the plan, shows that you're taking the next step in implementation by starting the exercise, bringing it back. shows that you're taking the next step in implementation by starting the exercise, bringing it back, um and putting the priorities together, and then working with the planned implementation committee to prioritize those, even though things are highly rated, it may involve funding, funding's not readily available, and the one, so the issue is, we know this is our number one priority, we're gonna pause on this one, cause we got to lay more groundwork. Let's go to number two on the list, or number three, and maybe we can do those, or as grant funding becomes available, things will get moved up, so priority list is not an absolute set of handcuffs, it's a sense of.
No, but it requires, I mean, it's a, it's a partnership, I mean, you can, it it doesn't do much good for the 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 planning commission to say, these are the priorities.
Yeah, you get.
One of those priorities is managed and and responsible by a completely different entity, you say, well, it's not a priority for us, and then you're at, you know,
Right, yeah.
so that's, that's the, that's the point of having that that partnership and that prioritization together, I mean.
I like the idea of doing the prioritization exercise as we're thinking about the implementation, you know, cause I do think that's gonna focus us, at least in the beginning, what, you know, so.
Yeah, and I can sort of.
I mean, I guess you could do both at the same time, yeah.
As said to George, I'll share all sorts of information and things that I've worked on over the years, that may be helpful for this.
I'd love to do next year.
And I think if anybody's kinda crazy through the new year, and then after that, they're ready now to start focusing in, if you will, and
But we don't have to do that.
the exercise could unfold over the next four to six weeks or so, um, so by the end of the first quarter, uh, it could be time for the first meeting of.
Yep. Yeah, I was thinking April, actually, that's what I had in my mind, but.
Can we talk about um adoption, the 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 next steps, you know, uh, if we, if we uh.
We've got a draft motion in front of you.
Yeah, okay.
A long one.
A little rare.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be step one.
Paper down with you. Whereas this motion is in front of us.
Paper, the uh. Read your paper properly.
But does uh, does it need to be ratified by the board of selectmen?
It's not, no, it's not.
So under Connecticut state law, plan of conservation and development is delegated to the planning commission of a municipality to prepare. Um, the requirement was that we refer to the council of governments um and the board of selectmen sixty five days in advance to give them an opportunity for comment. Um, comments were received officially from C O G and board of selectmen, I think you met with uh the board of selectmen. Comments have been incorporated, um so at this point in time, it is squarely in the commission's court here, is to take uh whatever appropriate action you feel is called for.
And the 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 draft you have in front of you does does include um revisions to date, including those directed this evening. I did put some language in there that that does that.
Okay.
If the alternative would be to send us back and bring you a completely clean copy, but I mean.
I don't, I personally think this.
We've, we've been through it.
I mean, I'd be, you know what to say.
It was like, it was not like.
We trust you. Well, we wanna see Glenn again, so maybe, no.
How may we, we'll have Glenn withdraw.
I know, this is true.
I'm gonna have commission withdrawals.
And and if you wanna tweak that 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 whereas document, I mean, I don't, I mean, I have particular ownership for it, but it just kind of,
A lot of thought went into this, yeah.
it's 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 a nice memory of what what you have done, I mean, it, and and it gets that stuff kind of on the record
Yeah.
as part of your findings and justification for the process.
Nicely written, I don't remember such a nice proclamation for our last one.
Alright, I mean, it was like, uh, we're done, yeah, who says yes, yes, we are, sounds great.
I don't know, I can't, I don't remember that part back.
I'm gonna take credit for that primary or partnership.
Alright, do we have to read this whole thing?
Oh, do.
I think this is like for the.
No, I, I was, so no, you you don't, I mean, I um you you certainly can reference the draft, um.
Shouldn't we do it for the.
I mean, we can read this if you want to.
Draft resolution.
I think it'd be a nice uh.
But.
Yeah.
I think it's a nice touch, and also, for any audience, oh.
Wrap it up.
Okay, do you wanna read it? Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure.
Nice touch. There you go.
Holly.
Go ahead, Holly.
Okay, no, I just think it's nice, and again, for the, for the one in the audience.
No, no, I think it's.
No, you could have, you could, you could each go down and read it, an individual whereas, that's what the board of selectmen do.
Oh, yeah, how many, we could, everyone to hit that whereas, okay, Marcus, you start there, go ahead. All right, Joe, we'll start here.
So is it.
Should I start it?
Does it have to be in the form of a motion?
Yes, I um, I move.
So yeah.
Well, I think you're now there for it, right?
I move that we um adopt the twenty twenty four Town of Simsbury Plan of Conservation and Development, whereas section eight dash twenty three of the Connecticut General Statutes requires the planning commission, herein commission, to prepare, adopt, and amend a plan of conservation and development, herein referred to as P O C D for the municipality, and requires commission review at least once every ten years.
Whereas the commission has prepared an update of the twenty seventeen P O C D entitled the twenty twenty four Town of Simsbury Plan of Conservation and Development effective January first, twenty twenty four.
Whereas the commission, with the assistance of town planning staff and Glenn Chalder of the Planning Consultancy, Plan and Metrics, engaged in a robust public process during twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, soliciting input from citizens through an online community survey, stakeholder meetings, two public input sessions, and a formal public hearing.
Whereas the commission held a duly noticed public hearing on October twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, closed on the same date for the purpose of receiving comments on the draft P O C D.
Whereas a copy of the draft P O C D dated August eleventh, twenty twenty three was filed in the office of the town clerk on August seventeenth, twenty twenty three, referred to the town manager and board of selectmen on August seventeenth, twenty twenty three, and referred to the Capitol Region Council of Governments on August seventeenth, twenty twenty three.
Whereas the commission has considered the information presented at the public hearing as well as communications related relative to the P O C D, and has made numerous revisions to the draft based on this public input, communication, and additional study.
Uh, whereas the P O C D establishes goals, policies, and implementation items for achieving community goals over the next ten years.
Whereas the P O C D will provide a policy guide and decision-making framework to local boards, commissions, and citizens with regard to conservation and development activities in the town of Simsbury for the next decade.
Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town of Simsbury Planning Commission that the Town of Simsbury twenty twenty four Plan of Conservation and Development with a final revision date of January twenty twenty four and including minor additional revisions directed by the commission on November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three is hereby adopted with an effective date on January first, twenty twenty four.
The second motion.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the twenty twenty four Town of Simsbury Plan of Conservation and Development, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously.
Very good.
What I'd like to do, first of all, I really thought it was wonderful that each of you read it, it's very nice. I I'd like to suggest putting the resolution into the document. And so right now, we don't actually have sort of a page for it, only sort of blank page is the outside back cover, that seems like kind of a bad place for it. So what I thought is, if you have the document nearby, um, we have the cover, inside is the table of contents here, and then the cover letter, which I'll work with George and Aaron on, any refinements to that. The next page right now is a map plan index, and I think that that would be a wonderful place to put the resolution, and this could go to the back page, but even an electronic document, this 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 may not necessarily be a tremendously needed page. So that would sort of be my thought here overall, any other, George, what do you like?
I think you should put it in the document.
I think so too.
Yeah, I think so too.
Is that a?
And it lets people who read the document understand how it came to be.
I think so too.
Because what was exactly.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very well written.
You know, come on, we started in twenty twenty two, yeah.
Yeah.
When we were under lock and.
At the very, at the end.
We were under lock and, right?
Yeah, that was the, started that, started right on, on to, on to, on October through Thanksgiving was the sort of.
Yeah, we were open. We just come out, I think. Yeah, it was under lock and, that we did all of that uh housing, housing stuff.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, wow, yeah, it's been, I know.
Yeah.
So it's been a pleasure working with each of you all in, thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn, and thank you, George.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, commission.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, it was a lot of work, but it's, it's a good document.
You should be proud of it, it's.
Yeah, no, I, I, and I'm really excited about the implementation um in in the process, and um I mean, we'll, we'll talk more, but I, yeah, I'm very excited about that and getting that going, cause it holds our feet to the fire, I think we didn't do, that we thought about in, but we didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I I pledged to George to work with him and share information in terms of experience in other towns, so I said to George, I'm just a phone caller and email away, and I I'm a cheap, you know, coffee date in the morning, so, so.
In the town resident.
I didn't turn around, it's certainly not going anywhere, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure again. Right, and thank you, George. Right, anything else?
I'm making motion, we act like a shepherd and get the flock out of here.
Well, I do wanna, I do wanna say though, um, so this is our last meeting of this board.
You don't have to quote that.
Um, and I know Craig's not here, and Julie, hopefully we'll have you back.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully have you back.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
But until that happens, thank you, cause officially this ends your, this tenure.
This is my last, yep.
Um, until, so, you know, hopefully that, we will have you back, but thank you, because you were so instrumental in your comments during the P O C D, you're a great commission commissioner, so um, thank you, and, yeah, and so hopefully, hopefully we'll see you back.
Thank you.
And same with Craig, I know he's not here, um, he's traveling, but um, his, hopefully, he'll be back too.
Hopefully, you know, he was.
You will have an agenda item on December twelfth, uh, re-subdivision publication.
Oh, okay.
December, December twelfth, I think.
I think that's right.
Okay, so we got one last meeting.
Yes, because I think George, we're not, are are we?
Twenty fourth, we're on.
Well, yeah, would be.
Say that again?
The twenty sixth, we're not meeting, right, December twenty sixth?
We're not meeting, December twenty.
Yeah, okay, go, just, just.
No. Page that, we have one more, before you, before you vote on adjournment, we forgot one item.
Okay.
We can't go to the very last, it's got.
So we were going back, Glenn and I were going back and forth about inclusion of acknowledgements.
One forty, you're four.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's just a little complicated by the fact that it's the end of terms, and we just had a vote, so
Just page before that.
the way it is shown currently um includes everybody.
Yep.
Folks who worked on this process, and then the folks who were just elected.
Mm-hmm.
And so the question is, is that.
I would, I would not put.
We would have, I knew you were gonna say that, so
I would not.
Oh, okay.
We would suggest going back, we're making the change to uh
Yep.
tho those uh impaneled and 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 participating as uh prior to the November four election.
Yes. Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
They worked on the, on the.
Yes.
Correct.
Yep.
Done.
Yep.
I would agree.
Yep.
Okay.
Interesting point.
Yes.
Yeah, especially cause the new boards don't take effect until.
Yeah, may, maybe in participants.
Mm-hmm.
We can change the uh the adopted date to tomorrow. December first, no.
Yeah, you can. Okay, that's what we'll do.
I'm gonna have to stay wakeful, like.
Okay, I forgot about that too, since that came up, yeah.
That's all, so now you can, now you've got a vote in a second on the adjournment.
So anything else, so, well, I'm I'm gonna, without objection, adjourn the meeting.